Good morning. It is nine o'clock on May 7th, and I'd like to welcome you to the open session for Clickat County Commissioners. We'll start with roll call and then Pledge of Allegiance. And, okay. There he is. Let the record show that Mr. Anderson is in the room and Mr. Christopher is on Zoom. Are you with us, Dan?
I am. I am sicker than a dog, but I am here.
I'm sorry. Good morning. Okay, so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Business agenda.
Commissioner Christopher, do you have anything to add to the business agenda?
I do not have anything for the business agenda. I would like to have a discussion on minutes, though.
Got it. Okay, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with two add-ons under unfinished business, the first being the Johnson and Johnson opioid settlement participation and the second being Hood River Bridge discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Meeting minutes.
I'll just start them one by one and then you can chime in, Dan. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 19th, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 26th, 2024.
I would second the motion, but I would ask for a friendly amendment.
What would that be?
And that would be, go ahead, Dan.
I'm trying to share my screen here. There we go. Can you see that? Those are the minutes? So it shows at 2:03 that I left the room for a meeting and at 2:13 that I returned to the room for a meeting. And it gives the auditors discussion in the middle, but also in the middle, there was discussion about the jail, and I think that needs mention. I don't care what words you use, just that there was discussion about the jail is fine with me, but I believe that should be in the minutes.
Go back to that real quick, Commissioner Christopher. Could you hold that back up?
I believe it was actually before the auditor. When I go back and watch the Zoom live.
So it shows that you abstained, but the minutes are showing that you left the meeting and you weren't even there because at 2:13 you rejoined the meeting.
Correct.
So would you say that abstain shouldn't be included because you weren't there or were you there?
No, I abstained on the third on that vote. She did give me the update because it, but because it was such a brief update, I went ahead and abstained from it just in case I missed something. My point is between 2:03 and the auditor giving an update, you guys discussed the jail closure. And I think that discussion of the jail closure should be in the minutes. I don't have a problem with any of this that's written. I just believe there should be something after the 2:03 that says discussion on jail closure, just so if somebody's going back and looking for it, they can find it.
So maybe, maybe in order to make it clear, we need to put that you joined the meeting above your abstention. So that you were actually present for that.
So at 2:00, I saw there it says discussion of public health and safety. That was the discussion. And then he said he wanted to talk about it, and then he had left. So I put it in there.
Okay, so it is there. It's just public health and safety.
Okay.
All right. I am fine with a friendly amendment, just changing the wording there. And then are you fine, Dan, with making sure that it looks like you were present for the abstention?
I'm fine with that. If you guys are fine with putting something up here that says jail discussion.
Yep, and it needs to go below you. Oh.
Somewhere between 2:03 and 2:13. That's all that matters.
Right, but there was a little bit of the conversation before.
Prior before he left.
Right. Right. Okay. I have no problem with staff updating it. All right.
Me either. I'm good.
Any further?
No.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the March 29th, 2024, meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the April 2nd, 2024, meeting minutes as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for the meeting minutes. So we're to that portion of our meeting for public comment, and we have in the room and also on Zoom. So if you're called, please come forward and give us your name, if you'd like your name, and where you're from. And also on Zoom, let us know when we call on you. So in the room, Mr. Joby, I see you're up and going.
All right. My name is Mark Joby. I'm from Bickleton. I'm certainly disturbed and distressed by the whole drama that is the board. Kind of the topic. There's three of you, and I'm troubled by the perceived lack of cooperation. So I'd like to read a couple of things. In an email dated March 28th, 2001, an individual wrote to the Commissioners, "On Tuesday, Commissioner Christopher mentioned that perhaps the county could explore contracting with another jail outside of the county. I sincerely hope that is being considered." I don't know who wrote that, but it's because it's redacted. I have reviewed, at this point, hundreds of pages of emails that I have requested. And I just got another batch from Skagit County that are very troubling, that don't necessarily have to do with the jail and certainly don't, but just letting you know the context here. On March 28th, at 10:02, six, eight hours later, Mr. Christopher wrote, "I have brought up outsourcing our jail for years, and I've gotten nowhere with the pass board or this one. To me, this would reduce liability and costs to operate and pay legal claims, add to the costs, the building of a new jail, blah, blah, blah." That flies in the face of statements that have been made that have caused all sorts of distress between the two Commissioners present today and Mr. Christopher. That doesn't comport with things Christopher has said. So he's clearly, at some point, knew about this jail issue. He ran for office prior to being elected. He personally told me that he had disdain for Songer, the posse, the jail amongst other things. So this email comports with that. I discovered this email through the article that Lou at the Sentinel wrote. Let me move on kind of quickly. He wrote to Lou in April 15th, "In regards to what Commissioner Zoller was quoted as saying about me in your paper, I will summarize by saying this is hogwash. She makes it sound like there's been talks for years about closing the jail." He adds, "Totally untrue." I find that troubling because the financial consultant that you guys use was hired by Dan and was asked to commission a study on the costs of the jail. And I'm in receipt of that, and Christopher had to have known that this was being studied because he directed this individual to do this work. So we're not being transparent. We're not receiving transparency.
Thank you. Sorry for the time clock. It's always, always waiting on us. So is there anyone on Zoom this morning? I see no one this morning yet. Ann, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wasn't sure how my audio setting was. I just got here. I do have one comment on the recorded meetings for the county Commissioners. Your website has been reorganized or something, and they are really hard to find now, the more recent ones. If you look on the main page of your website where it says recorded county commissioner meetings, the most recent ones that are there are from 2022, which makes it appear that all of 2023 and 2024 is not available for viewing. I finally found them, but it's kind of a convoluted process where you have to go up to the how-do-I and down to documents, and there is a way to find them, but it'd be real helpful for people if you'd put them back where they were because that's where folks are used to looking for them. And some of us can't always join, but we do try to log on and see what happened while we were gone. So I was a little distressed to find out I couldn't find any of 23 or 24 the other day. I finally found them this morning. So I don't know who your website designer is. If you could put those back where they were or something, it would make a lot of people happy. That's all for this morning.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, back in the room. Anybody else have comment this morning? Mr. Schroder?
Dennis Schroder, Goldendale, Washington. Appreciate you replying for my, replying from my questions from last week, but I didn't get them until late last night, early this morning, so I'll need to kind of review those. So moving on, I mean, I have a lot of other questions. The first one being, what are the other counties or municipalities that are involved in the risk pool that Clickat County uses? Next question is, how do they feel about the number of claims Clickat County has had, including the $400,000-plus settlement for the Kirby lawsuit for non-compliance of public records requests? And do you feel Clickat County is at risk of being removed from the risk pool? Where are the three public locations that Clickat County posted for, or posted the request for the franchise agreement for Carringer? And are the three public locations the same each time that requirement is needed? And is there a public record or affidavit of postings that shows the county postings? And regarding windmills and solar, for that matter, my understanding is windmills were originally classified as real estate for property tax purposes. Then it was changed to personal property. Who decided the windmills and solar panels are personal property versus real estate? And the last question I have is, does Clickat County own the road and right-of-way along the entire proposed Carringer franchise agreement? Or is some of the land still in private ownership? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Back on Zoom. Who do we have? iPhone? I don't have an identity.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Leslie Narimore. I live in Clickat County. And I'm just wanting to voice my concerns about the jail and that ongoing situation. On the agenda today, I see that there is a purchase that is supposed to be approved for the sheriff's office regarding the purchase of Overwatch for a pretty hefty sum of money. And I think that you owe us, the citizens of Clickat County as taxpayers, an explanation of what's going on the jail before you purchase anything further for the sheriff's office. So I'm just requesting an update. I think that transparency needs to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Back in the room. Everybody's quiet today. Online, anyone else wishes to speak, raise your hand. Boy, it's a quiet, quiet day today. We'll give it a couple. 2662.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Tracy McCune from Lio, Washington, and I have two things I'd like to just mention before you start my time. One is, my last name is spelled M-C-C-U-N-E, just for when you put it on your meeting minutes. And I just wanted to get one answer from you Commissioners before I start my time. And that is, are any of you involved or on any fire departments or EMS districts or any of the sort? And are you considered essential workers? That's my two questions to start. Can you answer them now?
At the end, we do, Tracy.
Okay, well, it was going to impact my next, my next comment. So is my time started then?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'd asked for it not to start until after. And I did try calling all three of you Commissioners, and I don't know if you've got the messages to please get ahold of me last week so I could ask you those two questions. But so now I have very limited time. I guess I will speak on what I can. So are you folks, one, another question, are you familiar with the Joint Communications Consortium? It's a business consortium consisting of Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue, an Oregon Rural Fire Protection District, the Oregon Department of Forestry, an agency of the state of Oregon, and Columbia River Intertribal Fishing Enforcement Agency, a joint agency formed by the tribal governments. Yes or no? If the answer is no, these, this consortium is what, who leases from the landowner, Staccarbut. So Clickat County is subleased from the consortium. The consortium is, is in their lease agreement. It states that they're responsible for all maintenance and things on the towers. So when Jeff King says that four antennas fell because of snow, well, that wasn't his job to fix them. So if he's putting antennas up, it's not on the Staccarbut tower. And my second question is on elected officials. So Jeff King and Public Works and the Planning Department, they are not elected officials. You folks are the elected officials' voice for those, for those entities. I've come to you over and over and over about my address problem. I'm recusing today that you ask Public Works if Clickat, 421 Clickat Avenue, is located in Murdoch, where the parcel is, or if it's in somewhere in a Clickat site. Please ask the Scott, the Planning Commissioner, or I mean, the Planning Director. If, I talked to him, and he also saw that there is a problem with 421 Clickat Avenue. And then ask Jeff King and see if he has something to say about it. Because there is a problem. I believe that 421 Clickat Avenue is actually the site in Clickat for communications. And I would like to see if I could get that resolved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Back in the room. Everybody's quiet this morning. Good morning, Rita.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Rita Pincho. I live in White Salmon in Clickat County. Thanks for taking my comment. I am calling in this morning to express ongoing concern about the situation at the jail and also agree with the comment previously made by Leslie about concerns about funding continued services in the midst of all of this. And I'd like to add to that and say that I'd really love to hear from you all how you're prioritizing funding to address the lack of mental health services that exist in our county. I think it's been brought up at previous meetings that mental health services have been allowed to deteriorate to, you know, nothing really over the past 10 years, and I see a lot of hope in people rebuilding and trying to provide what services they can. But what I'd really like to know is like, is what the role of you all as the Board of Commissioners and the county is and will be to address that and ensure that all people have adequate access to mental health care and that it's not falling in the hands of law enforcement and first responders and teachers who shouldn't have to and don't have the capacity to be able to manage that. So I'd love to just hear your thoughts on that and where we're at, and also what role you see community having in addressing the lack of services. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Great. In the room, anyone? Back online. Is anyone else available this morning? Here's someone. 7211.
Greg Wagner with C. "Mr. Joby, I can answer your question. Lack of transparency is normal for this board. You won't get much out of it. I'd like to address some other issues I have. I've been writing to Mr. Jeff King and Rural 7 Fire because I am concerned about the two acres of proposed lithium-ion batteries that are going to be storing electrical energy for this Carringer project if unfortunately it's built. It's going to be around many people's homes, and I'm asking what, how is this county prepared to fight a lithium-ion battery fire? How are they going to notify the citizens? What's the evacuation plan? I would like to know just what's going on with Jeff King and the emergency management, how they're preparing for this potential disaster. And I get no replies from him out of four or five emails over the last six or eight months. But it seems like he doesn't even care. I see him sitting in the back room. Maybe he can step up and tell people how his emergency management is prepared to fight a lithium-ion battery fire. I feel that unfortunately, he doesn't want to answer my emails. So that's something that needs to be addressed. And I'd like to know, with this franchise agreement, who contacted the county wanting a franchise agreement? Cypress Creek or was it EFSEC? Who in the county directed the Public Works to work on the franchise agreement? I want to know who's going to be billed for the work that the county did on this franchise agreement. Pretty important. I'd like to, I'd like to say, we hear a lot from Mr. Anderson, "Trust the process. Play by the same rules. We must be fair." I'd like to know, when is this so-called leader, Mr. Anderson, going to comply with the county codes and get a conditional use permit for his unpermitted short-term rental? Mochi Limblad, the previous planning director, who he bragged on saying he trusted her explicitly, and you're doing such a good job, Mochi, why doesn't he trust her now and follow the county rules that he says we all must play by and get a conditional use permit for his unpermitted short-term rental? Mr. Van Cleve, you're sitting in the back room. Why don't you direct your code compliance office to investigate Mr. Anderson's two code complaints? Building code complaints has nothing to do with short-term rental. But yet we hear Mr. Anderson say the county commissioners have no oversight over the code compliance officer. That's not true. That's a lie because you direct Mr. Van Cleve, who directs Mr. Pandase, the code compliance officer. So you do have oversight, Jake. You're just trying to get out of it. That's all you're doing. Another little game you're playing. So these are just more issues that shame the county and shame this board and make the people of the county have no trust in you. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Back in the room. Online, Gabrielle. Good morning.
Hi. So I'm going to clap back on the smear campaign about the short-term rental. The short-term rental is covered by an RCW, and there are more than one short-term rental in Clickat County. But the smear campaign seems to want to target a commissioner, and that is a problem. So yeah, I trust processes and I trust my Commissioners who are voted, that are sitting on those chairs, doing the county business. But what I don't trust are smear campaigns. And I think that you need to start addressing why you target one person when you're not addressing all of the short-term rentals that exist in the county. What's more, to have a short-term rental, you have to be obliged by law to have insurance, to have a safety plan, and to be able to conduct yourself with your customers. Honestly, this smear campaign has been going on for so long, and it's losing steam because you're not legitimate in what you're arguing about. All you're trying to do is embarrass a Commissioner, and all you're trying to do is slam him publicly. It's a smear campaign. It's slanderous, and it needs to stop. And that's what I want to say. On the second part, the sheriff is considering spending 14, over $14,000 a year for a service that is literally going to monitor blood pressure. You cannot address the issues at the jail solely by throwing technology at it. What you need to address is your humanity at the jail, and that no amount of money is going to solve. That is with individuals doing the right thing when they see there's a problem at the time of the problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabby. Back in the room. Anyone else online? Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning. Clickat County Board of, or Clickat County of Board of County Commissioners. I appreciate Gabrielle's clap back, whatever that terminology means. It's not a smear campaign, Ms. Gilbert. It is facts. It, you know, if you want to clap back, clap back. But when we have a Commissioner disobeying the county rules and everybody letting him get away with it, including his seatmates, that is a problem for our county because we should not be doing special favors. The government was formed, and if we all can go back to protect our inalienable rights. That's why they were formed, and we were to govern these people. They were to be our servants. That is why we pay taxes, so to say, so that we will have people to protect our inalienable rights, not use their power for special favors, and they want to say they don't do special favors. Oh, they're all over the place, special favors. You know, do you, do you think really the people wanted to spend their money against fighting our government's decision to allow a small village of transient tourists up on a hill that the road will kill people? Come on now. Do you think we really want to waste our money? Because your government, your people sitting there can withdraw this at any minute and stop spending our taxpayers' money on a fight in the legal system because we don't want to die on a road? For something that had to get a conditional special permit. You know, it's all through special favors. These corporations, these renewable energies get their, we can't call them tax breaks, but we can certainly say their method of appraisal has been changed, and the county now takes in less money from them. They're also not charging for franchise fees for right-of-ways that other cities and counties charge for. Again, probably millions of dollars, and you could have your little daycare center probably if you got that money. But no, they just come after the people, like Commissioner Anderson said, and it is verifiable in public that when the county can't pay their bills, they're coming after the people. We got to come after the people for the money. Now, every single person listening to me right now that's a taxpayer, including you Commissioners that have children, you should be ashamed of that. The people should not be your revenue when corporations, foreign corporations, are getting a deductible tax privilege when the county, and it has been proven by the state, and this whole, well, we can't change it. The state tells us we can't. We have documents from the state. You have been giving them that says you can use one method, two methods, a method of all three, and you should be doing the highest and best use, yet you have excuses again and again and again and again. And you mislead the people, and we're missing out on money that we could have, and you're coming after the people. And the people need to start seeing you for who you are, a corporation.
Thank you, Sherry. Anyone in the room? That wasn't Henry, so. You almost had to come forward. Mr. Morris, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. W.J. Morris, Executive Director, Save Dellsport, Washington. I would like to just make a suggestion, if I could. My neighbor, Ann, was on earlier about having to do the My neighbor Anne was on earlier about having to do the insane drill down for these videos. Can I suggest that a hyperlink be put on the B O C C main page? That would allow one-click access to those recorded minutes. Thank you for your time and y'all have a good day. Thanks.
Thank you, W.J. Try the room? Anyone else online? I'm not seeing anyone. No, we'll wait a couple of seconds. Seeing no one. One more last in the room? No one? Online, no one. We'll move on then for Commissioners' comments. Mr. Christopher, are you online?
I am. I'm hoping you'll let me go last, so I may not have to address everyone. If you guys already addressed them, that way I don't have to cough and sneeze through my entire response, if you're willing.
Are you ready this morning?
I like to make a shot at it. All right. Mr. Joby, I'm trying to figure out, you, you said that we hired a consultant, that Commissioner Christopher was hired by Dan to study the costs on the jail. As far as I know, we have not hired a consultant. We, we've had our finance, head of finance, looking into it as well as part of that, that task force. So I just wanted to clarify that. Anne, go to clickattackcounty.org, type, hit the Commissioners. At the top of that page is the recorded, there's a hyperlink right there. It's really easy to find. It's right at the top of the page. I'm looking at it right now. So you just go online, go to B O C C, Board of County Commissioners, and then right there at the top, it says Recorded Clickattack County Commissioner Meetings. And that will take you off the county website and put you onto the YouTube channel. And then what's really easy, what I do is I just copy that YouTube channel and make my own hyperlink and keep it on my page. So if I want to go back and look at it. Mr. Schroder, thank you so much for the questions that you ask. You're looking at not just one thing, you're looking at a bunch of things. Thank you for putting them in writing and giving them to us. And thank you for asking questions that, that sometimes we have to go and do more research for, which is why sometimes it takes a while to get back. Because you might ask a question of Public Works and somebody else and it takes me a while to get there. The answers to some of your questions today. Am I concerned about being removed from the risk pool? Absolutely. That is a concern. The public locations for the franchise agreement. So when we do public hearings, that needs to be posted in the paper and those affidavits have to come back to the board so that we keep all of that in long-term when we have public hearings. In terms of where they're posted, I'll let staff talk to that later. Usually they're on the front doors of the building. You see those all the time. They're also usually outside here. Regarding windmills and solar classified as real estate. This goes back to when Van was our assessor and when windmills first came here and the agreements that he put in place, looking at windmills as in essence, real estate. And then they would have a long-term agreed value. Whereas when Van retired and Darlene Johnson came on board, she changed that method of valuation. And we, as the previous Board of County Commissioners, do not have the ability to direct what the assessor does and how they assess. That's within them as an elected official. There was a lot of discussion at the time between the public and a lot of people were saying, this makes no sense. Don't do it. As I understand it, it was the beginning of the time when the state was making the recommendations of that would be the recommended way of assessing it. And Van had already agreed to it. So Darlene's statement on that is, is that we would, with the new ones that were coming on that day, we would get a huge bump in value from the way Dan was going to do it. So we'd get a, an initial bump. And then if people continued more and more and more kept coming, you'd be able to keep that pretty high. What we found though is, is with the depreciation method, it creates the tax shift burden, which I don't think Darlene at the time understood. But it also in the end lowers the total amount of dollars. As they repower, it bumps it back up some and then it starts over. I can, I've always been on record saying the way that Dan did it was brilliant and he spent a lot of time working on it. And I'm going to be spending next week working with the other county commissioners on the statewide policy for trying to find a way to reassess and re-tax those energy projects so that we don't have that cost burden shift. The Washington State Association of Counties put out a white paper on it. So this is getting elevated at the statewide level so we can address this. So thank you for bringing it up. Leslie, I have questions as well on item number 11 on the consent agenda. And so I will be asking that that be pulled for further discussion. Tracy, the Oregon group for the Joint Communications Consortium is an Oregon group. It's not a Washington group. They, Clickattack County, we do sublease on stacker buo. And you would have to look at our sublease agreements because if it's our equipment, it's our duty to maintain it. It's nobody else's duty to maintain it. Thinking otherwise, I would look, ask you to continue to look into that. Because I can promise you, the way you said it is not the case. And with regards to the address issue, we have all, I believe all three of us have spoke with staff, multiple staff. You have been given the answer many times over many months with regards to the address issue. Rita, great question. How are we prioritizing funding to address the lack of mental health services? We are doing everything that we can to build the mental health program. We took over crisis services well over a year ago. The board's direction at that time is, we went into this kicking and screaming. It's not what we want to do. It's not a core county function. It's a function that we're taking on because it's, we are the last line of defense. And the group that was doing it left the county. What we'd said at the time is, is that we don't have the county dollars to pull from public safety, healthy and public safety to do, to, to move into this. The state needs to step up and the state has stepped up. The state HCA is paying for all of crisis services and we are moving into providing outpatient treatment services, which are greatly needed in the county. And the state will be paying a hundred percent of that as well. So it will not be going on your tax burden. It won't be a tax shift from other safety measures. That's the, the whole purpose of where we're going. In terms of prioritization, creating that outpatient treatment program is one of my top priorities. I meet with our behavioral health team regularly and I continue to push them so that we can provide outpatient treatment services by July 1 of 2024. Sherry, when I said the county can't pay the bills and we're coming after the people, those are not my exact words. What I said, stated is if what happens and has happened in other counties throughout the nation, if you have to pay out huge settlements or huge lawsuits and you lose in court, that can go on your taxes as direct to each individual taxpaying citizen. We do have insurance. Our insurance only has a certain limit and we still have our insurance today and I hope we continue to have insurance. But if it goes above that, the county would have to set a levy or of some instrument in order to collect the fees in order to pay that. You're seeing that down in New York. You're seeing it in Oklahoma. You see it all over the place. That is all I was trying to state with that is, is that we, as the county commissioners, our job is to manage the funds for the county. If something comes in, it's a huge lawsuit and we all know in Washington, there is no tort reform, so lawsuits can be an unlimited amount. Somebody could sue you for a billion dollars or a county. And if they won in court and it was upheld, that is something that the tax, it would fall on the taxpayers because we don't have anyone else to go to. That's just how government works. Either that or you'd shut down everything else to try to pay that fine, you know, that fee each month. There, it's not where we ever want to be, but that is a possibility that can happen in Washington. Other states like Oregon have tort reform and so there are maximum caps on the liability that the counties have even for like gross negligence and death and everything. There's different values. It's something that the, the counties have been talking at the state about for years and begging, begging the state legislature to pass updated tort reform so that the citizens aren't on the, the hook for crazy high claims. And again, Sherry, we are not making excuses. The documents that you state from the state, that is a question that you need to address to the assessor. The Board of County Commissioners cannot direct the assessor to, to assess projects in any certain way. That is a right vested with the assessor. With that, there's more I could say, but I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Yeah, you covered a lot. Thank you very much. I can kind of skim the top a little bit. A lot of your answers were my answers. Mr. Joby, thank you for coming in with your concerns. Thank you. And Anne at Dallasport and W.J., it is a hyperlink. It's at the top of the page. Like Jake said, it's in bold, black letters. And it did take me a minute to find it the other day too. I kind of bumbled around a little bit. But when you click on it, it takes you where you need to go. So we may want to just put underneath of it, click here for people like me.
Brianna is still in the process of moving those videos over, so that might be where she has seen.
Didn't see everything she needed. Yeah. They'll be there eventually. It's a new system, so we'll get it all downloaded in your spare time. Yeah, yeah, because I went through them the other day too. So they are there. So, and Mr. Schroder, like Jake, thank you for paying attention to all kinds of issues. And you do ask questions that take a little longer to answer. So if you don't mind, I'll recap again and email to you on some of your questions. And the locations, you can find that from the girls in our office and they do a good job. And I'm sure there's more than three places that they post them. And we do legally have to say where we posted them. So that's all documented. Leslie and Rita, thank you. It's on our attention for the budget item. We'll be talking about that today. And Rita, budget season is coming. And something we've talked about with tighter budgets is we've got to really take a good look at what essential services mean to us and define what those essential services are and make sure we apply the correct funding to essential services and then we'll go from there. So I think budget season's going to be very interesting this year. And Mr. Wagner, the battery storage is a problem. It is a high priority. It is a scary thing. I think having those conversations, I'm sure you're doing it with EFSEC as well or at the state level is very important because it isn't just our county that's impacted with that idea. And I can tell you, Mr. King has the obligation to work with building and planning. So that's probably going to take a little time for everybody to come to the same conclusion at the best way to manage this. And I believe some of it will probably run through Planning Commission. So we can add that in on how we correctly want to take care of the, the dangerous batteries and how we'll address that. And I think that's it. And thank you, Gabrielle, for, for bringing up the RCW. The state does have lengthy RCWs on STRs. And I appreciate that they do that and it does tie those people to licensing, insurance, revenue payments. So the state does a pretty good job of regulating them. And the STR conversation will be a longer one here at our county. I for one have a lot of questions because with as many as in, in our county, it is going to take more staff, which means more budget to run a program around STRs. And also code compliance, I don't see how they can do the job that they have now and go out and manage between 350 and 500 estimated STRs that we have in our county. So both of those programs would cost us more money. So we'll have to take a hard look at that as far as I'm concerned. So, but thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Christopher if he's ready.
I can be.
Okay.
So I will try not to cough and sneeze during this. Mr. Joby, thankfully Commissioner Anderson addressed one of your inaccurate statements. I would also ask you to maybe research who hired the finance person. You said I hired. I believe you'll find out I did not hire. So again, I believe that would be an incorrect statement. Where, where this needs to come down to is you're pointing out that in years past, I've said we need to look at the impact of the jail on the budget and that is a hundred percent accurate and I stand behind that statement. I believe we still today need to look at the impact of the jail on the budget. And I've said that the whole way through this process. So it shouldn't be political. What we need to do is make sure we have done all of our research. And that's the only thing I'm asking for during this process. That we're doing all of our research to make sure we know what the implications are. Who's doing mental health transports? Who's going to be the bailiffs in the jail, who are in the courts? Who's going to be doing all these services before we make a rash, rushed judgment decision of closing the jail and letting everybody go by April 12th? Now thankfully that hasn't happened and it seems like the board has slowed down and has now got this task force answering all the questions to make sure that it's prepared if it does make the decision to close the jail. I've said the whole time that once I get presented all the information and have the facts, my decision might be to close the jail. It might not be to close the jail, but I will not make a decision without all the information. So again, not political. I've said that same thing time and time again through this whole process. My problem with the process is the quick action of the process without doing all the research first. Mr. Schroder, as the, a member of the Board of Directors of the Risk Pool, I am in all those meetings with the other Board of Directors. It is, there's two risk pools. One of them has 11 counties involved, I believe, and the other one has the other, what would that be, 28? I, unlike my seatmates, I do not feel we are at risk of being removed from the risk pool. Other counties have far more issues, far more claims than we do and have in the past and have not been removed. The risk pool is well aware of jail litigation, is well aware of deaths in the jail. They, they're quite common in the state. Lawsuits because of them are quite common in the state. We're working at ways to make it better. But again, I don't feel that because of the couple of issues we've had that we are at risk of being removed from the risk pool. Leslie, with the Overwatch of the jail and the budget item, I, I understand your concern. But, but part of me has to think that your argument is political. Because technically, if we can do something today and institute a program that checks for blood pressure monitoring of the inmates where we can tell when somebody's blood pressure is triggered, like they're hanging from a noose or something and we can get down there and find them, shouldn't we? Shouldn't we? Or should we not, just because it, it doesn't affect, you know, we, we're not getting the, the ultimate outcome of closing the jail tomorrow? We should be doing everything we possibly can to save lives and the health and safety in the jail while we're going through the transition period. And the fact that we would not be instituting an Overwatch program, program for the health and safety of the inmates in the jail and that people would say that we shouldn't is absolutely appalling to me. And that's about as nicely as I can say that. Rita, mental health, I a hundred percent agree with you. Me and Commissioner Anderson, I believe, are in lockstep on this issue. We have been in lockstep on this issue from day one. When we both started, we both wanted better mental health. I believe Commissioner Zoller has been on board with that since she started. I believe the board is willing and wanting to do everything it can to, to strengthen the mental health in this communities. And, and I'm, I'm happy that we are better off than we were when we took office and I think we'll be better off as we go along as well. And that's all I have because I'm about to have a sneezing bit.
Thank you. So consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with 10 items pulling number 11 for further discussion under new business.
I would second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Payroll warrant certification. He met approvals.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of 197,143.65 for the date ending May 6, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. So we're at that time of our meeting for department update from our Planning Director, Scott Peddlement. Good morning. Good to see you. Thank you, Scott.
Well, good morning. It's nice to see you back, Commissioner Christopher. And if you hadn't had a chance, check your email during the meeting. I sent you the two documents I just passed out in email just a little bit ago during the meeting.
I did get it. Sure. Thank you.
Oh, great. I'll just start off by saying yesterday represented most here two months. So that's
That went fast.
Well, yeah, it went fast as far as work, you know, as far as stuff going on. Just but at the same time, I was thinking about that, it felt slow. And then to the team this morning, I said it felt way longer. And they took it as, oh, sorry type. But I thought about that. And I thought of two ways that it has felt way longer. One is with the team directly because they are an outstanding team. And I, you're going to hear a lot of appreciation through this day because I'm reflecting on two months. But highly professional, incredibly responsive, and they're willing to jump in help with whatever. And I feel very close to the, the planning team especially. Then you go to the whole third floor and up there, I think things just working really well. So it feels like been working together longer. Likewise, with the Board of Commissioners, you know, I interviewed in October, well, I applied in October, interviewed in November. November is really when I started working with you in my mind because we were discussing things, the priorities and things like that. So then starting in January, I think, so I started contacting Lori regularly. So I've been, to me, on the job a lot longer than two months. This was a big week for my family and I, as we are now property owners in Clicktack County officially. So I've been spending a little bit of time out there as well. I'll, I'll take you first to the, the numbers that Debbie puts together for us. And she's working on going backwards as well. So hopefully, as we have more time, we'll start getting some historical numbers, too, to compare these two. So it's not just the snapshot of, of the year. I think a couple of things I just pointed out on this one are some of the activity we're already seeing. We're seeing a lot going on already, two conditional uses in May, the first week of May, we've already seen, which is reflected in the three pre-apps, the previous month for conditional uses. And we have two SIPAs already. So we've got quite a bit of activity already starting. The other thing I'd like to point out on the other side is the, the pre-Subs, the site, the short plans. We just have a lot of those going on. And really, you know, coming from Oregon, where it's much harder to divide forest land, farmland than it is here, we get a couple of these a year. And so to get, we're constantly running 20 or 30 of these applications at a time. And Rebecca does a great job with that. And she's working on some efficiency measures to try to help some of the extra work we have with going back and forth with the applicants and their, the representatives to try to minimize the amount of time we spend reviewing and giving them more information upfront as to what we expect. So I think we're making some good strides as far as some efficiency measures there. Taking you to the summary I put together. Just a reminder with the Board of Adjustments, we're still looking for a placement for District 1 or 3. And we do have a, I think I told you when I first brought that up, it's probably going to be a while before we have another one of these. Well, it's not. June 3, we have the Smith RV Park coming up before the Board of Adjustments. So we do have an application before us. Planning Commission, they held a special workshop. And again, as appreciation, it's what a great group of people. They are dedicated, they're hardworking. They seem to enjoy getting together, spending a lot of time. And they agreed to have a special workshop, an extra one last night that went very well. We got through Chapter 3 on wetlands, moved on to Chapter 4 Fish and Wildlife Habitat. And I've appreciated the thoughtful conversation that's gone on through those chapters. On May 20 is a Wilson Monroe Rezone. We can't say much about it because you're the appeal body. Where there's a lot of public interest in this one, though. So we expect this to be a very, a long and meeting with, with a lot of good input on that one. Comprehensive Plan, Public Outreach, I know I keep pushing these off, things have just been kind of busy. But I'm, I'm going to shoot for the week of May 27 to have the meeting with the councils. And then the week of June 10 with the general community, I have had some conversations with some council members to try to start getting an idea of when their times are and what would work best for them. We've had conversations with the Oncall Land Use Consultant. We've got a contract ready that's going to be reviewed shortly by the prosecuting attorney. I think one of our first projects we're looking at utilizing them on is the Bluebird Solar. That would help move us forward quicker on that. Also make sure we are thorough in our findings and our conditions. And I think that they'll be a good asset for us. And that also because of our agreements with refund, you know, be cost recovery that that's one that the department wouldn't lose money on that would be fully covered by the applicant. So I think that would be a good one for us to start with. Northwestern Lakes cabins, this one came off the list of let's hope to, to let's, we're moving close. I can't, don't share a lot of details because we're still working on some things with the PA's office of Dave and Rebecca. Really appreciate all the work that they've put in. I know they're busy right now and they've given us a lot of time. But I think we're getting close to a solution on that one. And hope to report back on that not too distant future. We have spent some time in site visits and individual discussions. I had Lori Anderson Tours Incorporated. She could have a business. She's, the whole time, I don't think there was some silence there because she had something to say about every property as we went along. And I really appreciated that. We focused on the Houston Snowden area, got to see the James Dean Aggregates site, under Canvas, Smith RV Park site, and then the Rezone site for Monroe Wilson. And there's just not enough to be said about getting out to these sites to get a real perspective on what's out there. And I think that's something that I like that our department is doing. I had a great meeting with George yesterday with Code Enforcement, long overdue. We've had some short conversations, but had a good conversation about planning and Code Enforcement working together, getting some updates, regular updates, seeing how we can support him better and his work. The county is incredibly fortunate in my perspective. I worked with two of the best enforcement officers in my opinion in Oregon at my time there. And he's right up there with them. He's a person who is resourceful, looks for solutions, sort of siding people, tries to work with people, tries to find, find other ways to get neighbors to help. And I've been really impressed with, with him to this point. And just wanted to express that. Also wanted to express some appreciation for some community members who took some time to meet with me. Tracy McKeon, we got to talk about comp plans and public outreach. Roger Gadway, the Snowden Community Council, met with me, we talked about some improvements we could do to public comments, public outreach, that we're actually starting to implement already with the Snowden, the Rezone up in the Snowden area. And that's not taking one side or the other, it's just getting the word out there. Because I think that's what's important is to make sure everybody understands the public comment process. And then I spent a good deal of time with Pat Arnold and appreciated her insights onto the comprehensive plan and other opportunities for community outreach. So I just wanted to express some appreciation for the time those folks took to meet with me. I've got a couple other current projects on the back. I won't go into detail about, as well as some pending ones that you can, can see. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. That's all I've got for this morning.
Great. Mr. Christopher, do you have any questions?
I don't. Just to say thank you, sir.
I really enjoy your updates. I really enjoy your helping to give praise to your staff and other directors and other staff members. And that goes a long ways in this building. So thank you for setting that good example, sir. And I really appreciate your updates there. We went a long time where we didn't have regular updates from planning, and these are perfect. Keep up the good work.
Appreciate that feedback. Because I don't always know what you're interested in, but these do help keep me on track as well.
Yeah, you're never getting out of updates. I enjoy your updates. And I, I love how positive you are. I really appreciate that. And that you're an efficiency expert. That makes me very happy that you like efficiency and you work hard to achieve it. And thank you for doing site visits. It's incredibly important to see what you see on paper on the ground. It makes such a big difference. So thank you for, for doing that. And we have a big county. It's not easy to get out to all the places. But once you're familiar with them, it makes your job so much easier to know what our county, the lay of our county really is and the people. And I really admire your appreciation of other people, of the public and of the employees and of all the people you work with. And you're a builder. And, and I appreciate that, that you build relationships with people.
Thank you. It's easy when you work with such good people.
And I can see it in your department, that they're happy and settled and confident. They're going forward. So that's great.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have.
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner, reports or updates?
We've got these guys here.
Want to let him go first? Sure.
Did we read that wrong?
No. I always think I do it wrong, and then I have to look again. Switch that around. I think I always bumble on that one. So, so Department Update, Public Works, Jeff Hunter and Seth Scorola. And you're here right on time. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we went through the consent agenda. So everything worked well for us. So we'll move on. We have a couple of public hearings. So we'll see you again at 1 o'clock. One for a speed limit change and one for franchise agreement. At that, we'll turn it over to Seth for some construction activities.
Lot going on in construction. Currently, we've got the crushing continuing in Fisher Hill Quarry, moving right along with that. Bickleton area paving, the paving is currently on Roosevelt Grade Road. They're doing the wearing course, I believe, currently. Sundell Highway 8, we have a pre-construction conference scheduled for tomorrow. We're going to hear when they're going to get started. Annual striping project is tentatively scheduled for May 13, depending on weather. On the design end of things, data collection, ball banking, we're just waiting for the final deliverables. Hopefully by the end of this week or next week, we should be wrapping up that project. Sunnyside Road overlay currently working in design. Bridge repair bundles, just getting the last pieces of the consultant agreement put together so we can get the consultant started on that work. And other preliminary work continues.
Okay. The maintenance side, east end is brooming and patching, west end is crack ceiling. Their facilities work. Sales barn, we'll kind of give you a quick update on that. Piers report last Friday, they're working on slab. Can't thank Ron Irig enough, he's keeping an eye on them. So it's not, not any draw from Public Works. Superior Court remodel, court is back in session. And everything is working fine. Events, there are more events this weekend and every weekend at the fairgrounds. So the events are, are kicking into high gear over there. Fuel Island, we're still working through that. Lexin Security, Heather has more money, so we are moving boxes now. We're in the process of moving the Goldendale ballot box. It's about security and ADA access. So we're moving it to where it'll be under the view of a camp. And it's state funded money. So again, good, good for her to get us, get that taken care of where it's not on the county taxpayers. HVAC contracts, courthouse is complete, Pioneer Center is this week. SADA site, I've been told the camera's working, I saw a picture, but we'll see in long term how long that lasts. Hopefully we're done with that. That project is complete. Home and Garden went well. My understanding is pretty well attended. And next big event or bigger, larger event is the Oregon Trail Rally for next Saturday. And that's all we have.
That's quick. The Lexington Security, when you moved that box, be sure to do an article in the paper. So everybody knows that box is moved.
Okay, it's actually down as we speak.
Okay.
So.
Just want to be sure.
I will talk that over with Heather. I don't want to overstep my bounds.
Oh, I was looking at Heather.
Get into trouble. Except, okay.
Got an idea. Okay, that's awesome. Dan? Did you have a question, Mr. Christopher?
Yes, I wanted to ask Jeff, did we have any power issues with the fairgrounds for Home and Garden?
No, we had no callouts for the, for the Home and Garden issue. Everything worked very well.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
And Friday was really busy. I'm interested how Saturday went with that darn weather.
I don't know. I haven't heard. We have a follow through with, with their group this week.
Good.
A walk through and discuss, you know, we, we tried to meet, or we, we meet with all the events afterwards, see what can be done to make improvements. So the event works better for them and for the county.
Okay.
We had no issues with it on our end.
How long is Sundell expected to take?
What do we have for working days? I don't remember.
I can't remember off the top of my head. But it'll be done before, trying to get it done before the end of the year.
Yes, it will be done so we can chip seal it. Because I think, like we told you, we went out on a limb and we got more state money to pay for that. If we go another year, we pay for it.
The taxpayers. I, I get it. I just was wondering where, how long it's going to take.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking August, September, August, first part of September, latter part of August for completion.
We're not going to be pushing then on weather to get it chip sealed. That.
No.
Good. That's my question.
We'll have more, like Seth said, after we meet with the contractor, see what their schedule is.
Good.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather? Department update with elected official auditor Heather Jovi.
Well, since Jeff brought up the box, I'll start with that. We received an election security grant back in 2020 that I have to either commit by September 30 this year or return to the state. So one of the things that we're looking at doing with that is moving ballot boxes to more secure and at the same time, more ADA accessible locations. So currently, the location where the box was, was not ADA compliant. You had to physically get out of your car in order to go put a ballot in the box. So this, the new box or the same box, but the new location will be in the parking lot behind the courthouse. And you will be able to drive in and actually reach from the driver's side without having to extend any kind of reach and deposit your ballot in the box. So it'll be fully ADA compliant. It will be lighted and it will also be on the view of a camera. We're also looking at potentially moving some of the other boxes or improving the, the lighting and security around those boxes. So Wishram, Clickitat, a couple of those are really a not ideal situation. So, but we had to start somewhere. And it will be in the voter's pamphlet that the box has been moved. And I will post it on social media that, that we have moved the box. So we make sure people are aware. We also have a fancy through wall box in our office now, in our election, our ballot processing room. So we're excited about that. And on the topic of ballot boxes, I would like to remind people that ballot boxes are very secure. They are collected regularly for the election we just wrapped up. We had eight ballots show up yesterday that were postmarked the day of the election and unfortunately can't be counted. So particularly if you're, if it's crunch time, if it's election day, I would suggest that you use the ballot box rather than the US Postal Service. So to segue into the election we just wrapped up, on Friday, we certified the Bickleton School Levy election. They had a 50% turnout, which I believe is the highest of all of the school elections. And it passed at 81 and 1/2%. So that was a resounding yes for Bickleton. Go Pirates. With regard to the re-presincting, we wound up sending out just over 3,300 notices, or we are sending out 3,300 notices to people whose precincts have changed. So, yeah. We are on day two of filing week. Locally, we have two commissioner positions and a PUD commissioner position open. We have 66 precinct committee officer positions open, one Republican and one Democrat for each precinct. Technically, two of those precincts have no voters. So they don't really have. Um, technically, two of those precincts have no voters, so they don't really have PCO positions, but. We, as of this morning, on my trip over here, we had thirteen candidates already filed for governor. The two major Republican candidates um have yet to file. So we could have, I would expect we will have at least fifteen. Um, if you look at the PDC website, it looks like we may have thirty candidates for governor, so it's going to be a um big no- big ballot. So, yeah. So that is all I have elections-wise. I do wanna bring up one thing that came up in your public comment this morning and is is relevant to your public hearing this afternoon. I was presented with an RCW on Friday, which is RCW thirty-six fifty-five zero four zero, which requires the county legislative legislative authority to cause the county auditor to give public notice um by posting the notice in three places for franchise agreements. Um, so it's not by place to say whether or not you are in compliance, but um that was not presented to me. I have not posted it in three places. So.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Do we, did we look to see um with the thirty-three hundred people that got, had to change precincts, did it um disenfranchise any PCOs?
By disenfranchise, do you mean did it move?
PCOs from one precinct to another?
It has.
Okay.
Um, at least two of those people who were moved to new precincts have uh refiled for PCO, because all of the PCOs have to refile anyway. Um, and allowed, in one particular case that I'm aware of, a new precinct committee officer to file because the um, the old precinct committee officer was moved, so.
Okay.
So we've.
That's what I was.
We've actually, I guess, franchised.
Yeah.
Instead of disenfranchised, but yes, there were a couple of PCOs who were displaced.
Yep.
Good for you.
So how does that work if we move the precinct, they are still a precinct committee officer until the end of the year? Um, and they're they're, they now no longer reside in the precinct in which they were in. Are they able to continue to serve out their term? And how does that work like between precinct committee officers as well as like legislators? That get moved? Do we know?
Um, the re-presincting is for the election coming up.
Okay, so. So it, so you're still there, it starts at the new next.
Yeah.
Got it.
Mr. Christopher, anything from you?
Nope, I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
So we're waiting for ten-thirty and Erin Quinn via Zoom. Um, is Erin on yet? We can go earlier, we can do commissioner updates. Okay, let's give her the time and do either of you have miscellaneous reports or comments?
Yeah, I've got one. Um, we got an email, I believe, last, late last night from Pat Arnold. Um, this is for a May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting here in Goldendale on the Pump Storage Project and there, the groups that she's with being opposed to it. I will be at the um uh, F or not FSEC, the WASAC meeting that night, and I was wondering if either of you were were planning to attend.
I planned on attending.
You do?
Uh-huh, okay. Mr. Christopher, did you plan on attending that meeting as well?
Uh, if you're going, that's good enough.
Okay, yep.
Okay, I just was wondering so that we could at least recover it if there were gonna be multiples.
And anything else for you?
Uh, hopefully, when uh after that, you can give us an update.
Yep.
On how it went, so the next week.
Yep. Mr. Christopher, do you have any updates or miscellaneous comments?
Uh, well, I would like to remind everybody that this coming Saturday is the Second Annual Goldendale Community Cleanup uh from nine to three, where people can uh haul up to three yards of trash to the transfer station at no cost. And then also we'll be doing volunteer pickup on curbside. So if you're looking to give back to your community and volunteer, we could use your help. Uh, show up to the courthouse parking lot at eight forty-five um and uh give back to your community.
Do you have uh a number of how many houses that you already signed up that that need help getting stuff cleaned up?
Uh, most of them don't sign up and ahead of time, they just put their trash out to the curb. Uh, we break the community into four quadrants and have people um, multiple people in each quadrant that just drive up and down the street and remove it from the curb. That way it's quick and it's easy. If people uh need help like removing an old washer and dryer from behind their house kinda thing, then they call in and um, get put on a list, which I do not have that uh list yet from um staff, because they are still uh compiling that list and will be until Friday, so I don't have a a number number on that. Last year was uh about eighteen that called in and then there was, I don't know, uh hundreds that just put it to the curb.
Thank you.
You're very lucky, because I had in my mind that your cleanup was last Saturday and I thought, oh, this is a terrible day, so.
No, it's this Saturday and I'm hopeful that I'm over whatever this sickness thing I have. So, and Republic Services has been very gracious. I wanna point that out, they're offering the the free uh transfer station services. I'm I'm assuming they're gonna be their donation amount will be about the equivalent to what it was last year of twenty thousand-ish dollars. They're also providing lunch for all the volunteers, which this year we are doing Uncle Tony's Pizza. So um, come on down, we'll feed ya and we'll put you to work.
I have nothing, no. No Erin yet online? Don't see her.
I attended the opioid settlement um online thing yesterday um for the dashboard. And it was, wasn't what I was hoping it was gonna be. Yeah, it was just a pretty high-level overview of of the state settlement dashboard that they will just enter the information in.
Okay, it wasn't something for us.
I mean, so we can, I think we can use it to, as our dashboard, you know, to send to, so that we don't have to create our own. We can just submit our information, uh which is nice. I mean, it'll save money from having to create it ourselves. It's just, it wasn't everything that I'd hoped.
Okay.
I I have a question. Did you guys get the email from WASAC about a um member-at-large uh conference in, I wanna say, end of June Yakima and also via Zoom about um policy changes is, I was hoping Commissioner Anderson might know if this is about uh Seattle um, King County situation, or if if he doesn't know, that's fine too, but.
It's not just King County, it's the other ones, Pierce, Snohomish, the big ones. And yes, it's the the update of the bylaws and um I just got the the email as well. Um, and so it's gonna have to go on the agenda. I would, I would hope that all of us can go um to make sure our vote our our votes count maybe for the last time. Um, yes, that's what it's all about.
Do you know if they're gonna give us um documents uh beforehand, or are we gonna be like last year, we're presented it at the time and don't get any research?
I I'm gonna have a conversation with them when I go up uh next Wednesday, uh just about that. And I'm gonna request that we get all the information well in advance and I think hopefully learn their lesson.
Thank you.
Uh, the other thing, I had Columbia uh by-state renewable energies on meeting on Friday. Um, they gave um updates on the uh line, the the new power line that's gonna go down the Columbia River. And so that's actually going through the process. Um, so that's gonna, we'll be seeing that shortly. Um, there's some big projects happening over in Oregon, um solar projects, uh repowering projects. Um, we've got, you know, repowering projects here on the Washington side. Um, so that was most of the discussion on that meeting. Um, and then there's a lot of discussion on um natural gas and um creating um hydrogen and putting hydrogen into the northwest natural system and that they can use about up to about twenty percent. And so that'll be one of the ways that they reduce their overall overall greenhouse gas emissions. So what you would do is you would have these um like large farms and dairies, you would, you would take the gas that comes off of that um, send it through a process and then put it back into the gas pipelines. Um, and so it's try, the goal is to try to get to that um regenerative economy uh on the energy side. So you're reprocessing all the gas and the waste heat and everything else. Um, lot of, um, it was really, really interesting, the the new technologies that are coming out to reprocess um that power.
Mr. Christopher.
Um, I watched the the last couple of Zoom meetings and Mr. Wagner actually had a good point about potentially uh charging franchise agreements and that other counties do and and it's come to my attention that potentially even the city of Goldendale might be currently um doing that. So I would be curious if my seatmates might be interested in in like directing staff, and I don't know who that would be, I'm assuming Public Works to give us a presentation on our our options there. Um, and at least educate us in that field in case we wanted to um go down that route.
Well, and I had met with Mr. Wagner last week too, and it was, it was very interesting. He had a lot of very good information, so it is on my radar too.
And I had a conversation with our Public Works Director, but I think it'd be fine if if we had a presentation overall from him. Um, that might go, that might help us understand the situation uh and the changes that have occurred with the Supreme Court case.
Right, okay, that's what I'm asking, is hopefully if we get a presentation or something um ideas, at least we're all in the loop, we're all transparent, we all get all the information. Um, I think that'd be good.
And I believe uh the city of Goldendale, they're, that's the utility tax, right? And they they haven't been charging franchise fees, it's been the utility tax that's changing.
I could be, I I heard it third person, so I really hate to speculate. I heard it was a uh, they've been billing the PUD for power lines in the right of way, but I don't know how accurate that is, so.
Yeah, we'll have to get, reach out and um see if Jeff can do us some further information with documentation.
Yeah, I just, I just know we need uh, we have revenue issues. So if it, and I know we probably can't uh go after ones that are already in, but if we um, at least you get the information to know what we're, if we wanted to go this route moving forward and and what the potential revenue impact might be, at least we can make an educated decision, which is all I'm asking.
Oh, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, me too. So we'll reach out to Jeff and talk about what that would look at, look like. Um, on that too, I've been having and doing some research and having a few just private meetings um for recycling of the uh blades from the repowering. Uh, some ideas about that. That's a problem that I learned in the meeting I did at Maryhill with international partners, that they all have that same problem with what do we do with all those blades? And so there's recycling opportunities for maybe new businesses to open to take care of that. Also, uh upcoming for plastic bag recycling, and I'm very interested in uh wasted food recycling. I've been doing some conversations, I wanted to sit down with R. McKenzie and have some talks about things she works on. Um, so I think, you know, it might be a way to make some money and it might be a way to save some of the things going in the landfill.
Do you, do you know that we actually recycle windmill blades at Roosevelt? I don't believe we take windmill blades, but I could be wrong.
And that's a conversation that's kind of being had right now about what, what could we do with them at the landfill, because that's a great opportunity. We have the property. Um, there was also an option of recycling right there on-site when they take them down uh for shredding one by one as they go. So there's different opportunities that might come forward on that. And always looking for some economic development out of it too.
I believe Erin's online.
Oh, good, okay. Are you there, Erin?
I am, yes.
Great, good to hear from you. Good morning. So update from our uh Department of Health update from Erin Quinn.
Yeah, so hopefully you got the packet with all the numbers. Do you have any questions about any of the numbers before I go into my other update?
I have none.
All right. Um, so I'm gonna just do public health first. Um, I think probably you saw in the consent agenda, and if you've already done the consent agenda, we did request a new car for environmental health as as well as surplusing one that we already had. Um, the cost of repairing it is greater than the cost of the actual car at this point. So um, we're post-COVID on the road quite a bit and definitely need the service of that car, so that was on your agenda. Um, they're also working on wrapping up our uh COVID After Action Report. I think it's about a thirteen-page document that was written by, in collaboration with some uh input from community partners. Um, all of the lessons learned in one document. Um, it's still got a ways to go, probably won't publish that until after the first of the year. Um, but uh kind of a compelling read of all of the things that this county is an organization and and with community partners accomplished during COVID and some of the challenges we've had, so. Um, they're definitely getting busier, they're seeing increase in permits. Um, and I think that was reflected on the, on the data as well. I did wanna point out for environmental health in public health, for environmental and clinical health, uh both are March data. We didn't have the April data done by the time of this meeting. So you're a month behind on data for those guys. Um, the nurses, uh I did wanna call out that Skamania County is deactivating their sexual reproductive health program. Um, we are looking at how potentially it would work and in conjunction with the state, Skamania County. If there's any opportunities to transfer any of the stock over, so that would start potentially as just birth control stock um as it was purchased with, purchased with federal funds. Um, and then potentially looking at what, if there is equipment that they would like to work with us on acquiring, um, that would be beneficial to our program, so. Not sure how that will all shake out, but that's kind of on our radar right now. Um.
Director Quinn, are we expecting an increase if they are reducing, if they're not gonna have it? Are we gonna see a big increase in white salmon, do you expect?
I don't expect we'll have a large increase. We already have a fairly decent population from Skamania County that access both WIC and the sexual reproductive health program. Um, I definitely think we'll see an increase, but as far as large, probably not.
Right, so we're already seeing people from Underwood come over to white salmon anyways?
Yeah, we, I mean, we have for
Okay.
Twenty years at least.
All right.
That I'm, I mean, just what I'm tracking, so. Um. Anyway, just uh to that note, we are having our sexual reproductive health audit. Um, all of the documents, I think, are due at the end of this week. I think the staff are gonna turn them all in today, so it's a couple of days early. That's a pretty huge lift. Um, this program continues to be on my radar. It's an excessively expensive program to run um without a lot of additional um funding from the state, so we're always looking at uh the cost of the program and and how we're running it and how to improve it, so. Um, that audit will be June tenth and eleventh, so we'll have people from the state reviewing all of our policies, procedures and processes to see if there's anything that we can improve in our program. Uh, we're also looking at a WIC audit by the end of the month. And I think that stuff's already all squared away. Uh, the nurses are doing quite a bit of outreach, so they were. Uh, the nurses are doing quite a bit of outreach, so they were out in Roosevelt a couple of weeks ago. They're engaging with schools as far as doing some education around um, some emotional health, hand washing. In, at the end of this month, they'll be in Lyle, there's an outreach there for the school. And then in White Salmon on the eighteenth for one of their school outreaches as well. Um, and then eighteenth in White Salmon, I believe, uh, behavioral health will be at that event as well. So um, getting back out into the community, it's been a really busy spring for them, so questions about any of that? Um, administratively for public health, I did want to call out that Angie Kayla retired on Friday after twenty-six years of service. We're very grateful for her time in service, um, we talked about, uh, she saw over sixty-six employees in the health department. Over that period of time and a million changes, um, and we're just really grateful for everything she's done and wanted to call that out. We are still advertising for health educator, um, we're hoping to have interviews maybe. Um, towards the end of this month or early next month, we have nine applicants. So far, most are pretty well qualified, so we're looking forward to adding that member to the team. We do have a dietitian, we were able to fill that spot, we filled it with Kirsty Madison. Um, she'd actually been our contract with uh, M C M C. And so it's uh, she's now just contracting, or she's not, she's now an employee, I'm sorry, with us. Um, so that was a good continuity that we were able to get that for the WIC program. Uh, public health did support, uh, mentor, um, sponsored mental health first aid. Uh, instructor training, it was a two, three day training, I'm sorry. Uh, we had twelve participants, so there's now twelve um, community members that are qualified to do. Mental health first aid instructor trainings, they'll be able to offer the mental health first aid class. Um, I think everybody's still kind of working through what their plan is as far as presenting that within the community. Uh, it was an expensive class, we paid for it, and then we just asked that um, the participants provide at least one, one class. To a group of county residents within the next twelve months, so. That, that was a really big deal that we were able to get those folks here and we were able to get all twelve participants in the class. It, it was a big lift and we're really grateful for the people that participated, there was a, I got really good feedback for that, so. Um, we continue to have a lot of conferences on our uh, radar and are participating in. I just wanted to remind the board that we did get uh, a pretty hefty grant, I think we can spend up to two hundred thousand dollars just for education. Clearly, we won't use all that, but we are maximizing our opportunities. As we have that funding, because I still believe that in the next few years, we may not have that opportunity again. And so I remind people regularly that they should take this opportunity now. And remember that they had these opportunities when we can't afford extra pencils, so we're working with them. I'm actually in Spokane, yesterday I met with um, WSU staff and faculty, uh, I participated in a. Um, what's the name of it? I participated in a research study, they were interviewing um. Public health directors throughout the state, they're trying to interview all of them, but it's about access to behavioral health services in each individual county and what that looks like. It wasn't a, it wasn't a very long event, but um, I, I felt there was a lot of value in participating in person. Um, and really connecting with potential academic partners that could support workforce development. Within both my programs, public health and behavioral health. As well as looking at different resources that are available through academic extensions that can help support the work that we're doing in rural areas. So um, that was a really successful event from my perspective. Um, and then tomorrow I'll be supporting uh, the regional public health meeting that's held in Davenport. So obviously I'm not there, so that's where I'm at. Um, we do have quite a few contracts pending, um, that you should be seeing in the next few weeks or month, maybe. Um, one of the, one of the contract positions we're looking at, we lost our breastfeeding peer counselor lead. Uh, we are required by WIC to have a breastfeeding peer counselor lead. Uh, that's typically one to two hours a week of work. Uh, we did have someone express interest, we're, we're just talking with them a little bit more about what that would actually look like from, from our standpoint. If it's a good fit for the organization, um, so potentially you would see that contract in the next month. We are, you should see a contract from the Community Development Block Grant, so that's the Department of Commerce. That will extend our, um, we have been giving approximately, not giving, but we are the pass through. For approximately seventy thousand dollars per year for WAGAP. Um, that extension should be on your desk in the next two or three weeks. Um, it's, we've, it's the same grant we've done for quite some time, it's just an extension, so that needs a signature. Um, we also were recently um, approached by the Department of Commerce. Um, WAGAP's been receiving about two hundred thousand dollars of funding per year for their um. Uh, homeless, one of their homeless programs, homeless funding programs. This county has opted out every year, I think they said since two thousand six of being the um, coordinator of the funds. However, they've changed the, they've changed the requirement so that it's required that the county does take the funding. In order to pass through to WAGAP rather than just giving it directly to the recipient. Um, so we will be accepting, that contract will come through. Uh, we will have to do a subcontract with WAGAP on that specific funding. Because we haven't contracted with them for this project specifically before. Um, so that will be coming through as well.
Director Quinn, with that going through us, are we then gonna need to take overhead in order to pay for it?
Oh, yes, we will have twenty thousand of overhead. Yes, I think Commissioner Christopher has a question.
Um, would that overhead be able to be deducted from the two hundred thousand pass through as an administrative charge?
I mean, I, I think that's how indirect funds work, yeah. So like they get a hundred and eighty, we get twenty, either way we get twenty, so I don't know if the total award's two twenty or one eighty.
Well, and I know essentially WAGAP gets these because the county doesn't want to step up its own. Or has chosen in the past is a better word, not to step up its own uh, homeless program. Uh, but part of this WAGAP is supposed to come out with a uh, comprehensive study every, I think, five years or something. And I'm curious if their uh, latest one is up to date.
Oh, I, I honestly, I can't speak to that, I haven't looked into it, we were just approached about this project on like last Friday, I think. And, and I just said that, um, I, somebody in the chat just said it is up to date, I don't know who. It's Leslie says it's up to date, so yeah. Yeah, so they, we were just told that we, that they would no longer be able to receive the funds unless we said yes, so we said yes. We're already doing a pass through, through them, so we didn't feel like it was a big lift um, to just do that funding as well. So we should be getting the contract, uh, I think maybe later this week, and then we can all review it and see what that looks like as well.
All right, I have no issues.
Thank you. Um, the other contract you're gonna see is the access to baby and child dentistry, the A B C D program. It's, we, we've done this program for um, as long as I can remember at the health department. Uh, it's our annual extension, so you'll be seeing that, there's nothing new or exciting as far as that goes. So we'll continue to be able to coordinate, um, we usually do the smile mobile one or two times a year. Make sure there's access for dental as far as, as well as doing referrals, um, encouraging clients to um. To seek dental care and helping them understand uh, which dentist that their insurance will accept, so. With that, and then uh, the consolidated contract is coming up in the next, probably next week. Again, there's nothing crazy on that one, it's uh, renewing our mosquito surveillance money that we use every summer. Um, there, the WIC Farmers Market Nutrition Program checks. Are on their office of drinking water, and then the sexual reproductive health uh, contract is on there as well. So, questions about anything public health? Uh, behavioral health uh, continues to be really busy. We did just finish, actually as of yesterday, I received the final copy of the contract. Um, in a welcome letter from Community Health Plan of Washington, they're our first contract with managed care organization. Um, we will start receiving funding from them monthly, starting this month. Um, sometime after I finish the contract, so sometime after yesterday, we'll be able to see that. Um, we are still working with uh, Molina, uh, Wellpoint, which was AmeriGroup before, in case that's confusing. And coordinated care as well, um, to work with what their, what their funding streams are gonna look like moving forward. With the anticipation that we're gonna offer outpatient services starting in July. Uh, we have some more furniture purchases pending, so you'll see those on your agenda coming forward. That's a slow process, but we're moving forward on that. Um, we're a pretty big audit through Carolon, who's our crisis. Who owns our crisis contract, they were formerly Beacon, uh, all of their documentation is due this Friday. So that's um, been a huge lift for the staff to get that all done, it's our first Carolon audit. Uh, we did have a Department of Health audit in the fall, but they asked for very different information. Um, they will be on site on May thirtieth to do the audit in person. Uh, we expect there's gonna be findings because we are a new organization, um, and we stood this program up probably too fast. Um, and so we'll just work with them on whatever findings we have as far as correction. So there, I have no concerns about how that will turn out at all. Um, on the data, I did want to let you know, for the data that I provided, that is up to date for April. Uh, we're still trending about the same as we did in twenty twenty-three for April, so no real changes. I think, let's see, we're still seeing the bulk of our calls in the Golddale area and the age group in thirty to thirty-nine. It's kind of where we, we see most of our calls for those. We are working with smart sheets and actually in both public and behavioral health. To transition our fiscal processes over into smart sheets with the anticipation that we'll need to do that before January. Um, to work with the new Kianta and also just as a process improvement project. We did have a training for behavioral health staff, it was a pro act training, it was a two day training that will um. It supports them in de-escalation strategies uh, with potentially unruly clients. So we had seven people that attended and completed that, that training as well. Uh, we are still working on the electronic medical records. Those, we're hoping to get demos scheduled by the end of this month. Um, and I think, I think that might be, I think that might be all that I have. Questions about any of that or any of the data?
Good job as usual.
I do not have any questions, um, I do want to take this opportunity to apologize to you. For not uh, submitting in a timely fashion your review as I was out of town. I will get that done post haste and uh, it will be glowing because you are awesome, that's all I'd say.
Thank you, I, and don't worry, I, I knew you're out of town, I wasn't stressed about it, but I appreciate the apology. Otherwise, I uh, am back at what, one thirty, I think, two, something?
Two o'clock.
Yeah, and we'll have multiple changes to the agenda just because life, so. Okay, I'll see back at two then.
Thank you.
Do we want to take up agenda item, I believe it was eleven?
We moved it to new business at one thirty? We have some time though.
Here it comes. Thank you, Richard, we're a little ahead of ourselves. So department update from Economic Development Natural Resource Director, Richard Foster.
We have a visitor today. From ecology. So uh, there were some questions previously um, on amendment five for the time extension for the Switzer project. I've done a lot of research on the Switzer project, continue to do so. Uh, but just for the public and everything, uh, so the Switzer project uh, is within RIAA thirty-one. Or Water Resource Inventory Area, and Clickat County is the lead entity on that for the Department of Ecology. RIAA thirty-one extends and covers basically the entire southern half of Benton County. Um, originally this project, I looked at nine different sites. Um, they had one site in Clickat County called uh, within Alder Creek Reservoir. That had a fatal flaw due to landslides from saturated soils that would occur from that. This current site is within the wood delayed planning area of RIAA thirty-one, or more commonly known as Four Seven Hills. Um, and it has currently interruptible water rights totaling fifty thousand acre feet of water. Uh, the Switzer project proposes an additional forty-four thousand acre feet of water. Um, how this all began was in two thousand and eight, RIAA thirty-one during their management plan. Had basically cited, uh, had priority recommendations for the watershed management. And trying to find ways of creating more water rights basically, uh, or finding new resources for it. And then the Office of Columbia River, uh, they have a legislative mandate to, in quote. Aggressively pursue the development of water supplies to benefit both in-stream and out-of-stream use. So that's kind of where we're at, we've, uh, this project started, I want to say at least legislatively, but from a, like, from the documents I've seen. About two thousand and eight, um, the, the amendment five that we have here. Uh, basically just extends it um, from, or to uh, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. And allows us some additional time for additional uh, funding, uh, funding requests from ecology. They're the ones that are funding this a hundred percent. And then I'll let our, our representative from ecology take it.
Sure, thank you, good, good morning, uh, Board of Commissioners, uh, my name is Tom Teb and I'm the Director of the Office of Columbia River. Uh, we've been working on this project for quite some time, um, one of my mantras is finish what we start. And so um, what we're trying to do here is finish the environmental impact statement for this proposed off-channel reservoir. Uh, as was mentioned, the purpose of this reservoir really is to take water from the Columbia River when it is available. It's not always available, uh, typically it's available during the winter or early spring fresh it. And the idea would be to uh, place that water in that off-channel storage. And would provide mitigation for those interruptible water rights that was just mentioned. So the idea is to, to provide drought protection uh, and or new mitigated permits uh, that would come from this reservoir. Now, the cost of the reservoir is extensive, and so we would need to work with partners uh, to develop and build the reservoir. But uh, as part of the permitting and environmental review process, getting the environmental impact statement complete is a major milestone. And hurdle that we hope to achieve, so I hope that uh, we can, we can uh, uh, move this amendment forward and finish this work. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
Tom, excuse me, right now, so this is going to mitigate um, the interruptibles that are already on there. Our, what are, how often are the interruptibles actually getting, getting interrupted these days?
Yeah, it's a great question, Commissioner, thank you for that question. Um, since the in-stream flow rule that was established in the late nineteen nineties, only once, and that was in two thousand and one. However, this year we came pretty close, we were at about seventy-seven million acre feet at the DOWs. The current uh, in-stream flow trigger for uh, curtailing those interruptible water rights in the main stem. Is sixty thousand million acre feet at the DOWs, so we were within thirteen thousand acre feet. Of having to curtail those water rights.
On, on another note, we created way back when the reservation. And the John Day Pool, where are we at on using that reservation and getting access to that? To create more, more interruptibles, if, if people are willing to have those interruptibles?
Yeah, uh, the John Day McNary Reservation is still in effect. And um, that remains in effect until such time as that it's, it's no longer. We have to work uh, with the Columbia River Fisheries Groups, all the federal agencies and so on. And our rule itself requires us to mitigate for July and August, no matter what, for any new permit. And so that's, one of the purposes of this reservoir would provide that July and August. And so that's, one of the purposes of this reservoir would provide that July and August water, even with the McNary Reservation. So this would be a way to sort of access that water.
So those would be released back to the main stem then, from this reservoir?
Yes, yeah, during July and August.
Okay.
Yeah, we would design the reservoir in such ways that we would take water from the bottom, essentially the cool water. Um, because we have also water quality requirements to meet.
Has this been done anywhere before?
Um, we, we actually do this in a, a smaller scale in the Akma Basin. And uh, we, we do have mitigation, uh, water, senior water, if you will, that mitigates for new junior rights, so that's. That's sort of the, the strategy here is to develop uh water that, again, that is available when we can take it. And then use it when we can't, essentially, it's a, it's a way to kind of park it in a bank, if you will, or a reservoir, and then access it when we're able to.
And then thinking of a reservoir, and you were talking about water temperatures, and I think of dry land over there, and I think warm water.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it'd be forty-four thousand acre feet, um, so it'll, it'll have some depth to it. Um, obviously, the upper ten, fifteen feet or so of the reservoir might get warm, but if it's used like we anticipate it. Um, you know, we think that it can be adequately designed to meet the water quality temperature standards.
Okay.
Have we run, I remember, you know, our original estimates were probably six, seven years old now on the, the cost to build and construct. And that was a lot of millions of dollars back then, have we updated a new PCE on it?
That's what, one of the things that we'll be doing is part of this, uh, finishing this environmental impact statement is have uh the costs reviewed. Uh, and actually updated for potential construction.
I don't have any problems with it in the first place, so I wanna give you a few more time.
And Dan, do you have questions? I think I've answered mine.
I do not have any.
Okay.
Uh, so just to clarify, so this, this contract amendment five would extend. The original contract went from twenty seventeen until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. This time extension is just mainly for the budget, uh, basically Ecology is gonna add additional budget to this project. So there, if this is signed, we'll also have an Amendment Six also come in front of you, just for your guys' situational awareness.
Yeah, we're trying to finish this work, and, and um, frankly, we were not funded for this work last biennium, but I have some available funds. And so, as I mentioned, I wanna finish what I start, and this is one that's been kind of hanging there, we'd like to get it done.
Yeah, you're quite a ways into it not to be able to, to finish.
Yes, Commissioner.
So what would Amendment Six?
That would, that would just be the increase in, in bud, yeah, the budget allocation.
Okay, okay, no, I'm good.
And I know you wanted the whole, why we pulled it before, so you got more information.
Yes, and I did, and I did some research, and then with the questions today, I'm fine going forward, I'd like to see it finished. I think it has a lot of value, um, and you're a long ways in, you're, you're getting close.
Yeah.
So no sense ditching it all now and a wasted project.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Do you wanna see it on the consent agenda for next week, is that the, the goal?
We can't do it today?
Uh.
We, I mean, I think we can do it, we, we can do it next week, just to cover our bases.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be safe, yeah.
You good with that, Commissioner Christopher?
Yeah, I was, I think it would have been a bad move to do it today, so next week gives everybody time to see it.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's the same one we've already seen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was just me needing some stuff, yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, secondly, on the agenda, uh, I'm gonna have to ask the Commissioners if it's okay. Uh, so basically, uh, we're not ready for a signature or anything like that as far as the contracts with the Department of Commerce. For two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover the engineering design work at the Columbia Ward Regional Airport for the Phase Two Aviation Business Park, thank you again.
Uh, before, before you go, Tom, is, would you like to give us an update on anything else that's uh, that OCR is doing within? Uh, that's gonna impact us in Clickatack County?
Well, uh, you all have probably heard Governor Inslee's drought declaration as of April sixteenth. Uh, this year statewide, with the exception of sort of the metropolitan area around Puget Sound. Um, we are obviously seeing um already signs of issues associated with drought, both for our fisheries. As well as our, our water users, uh, in the Akma Basin, for example, uh, proratable or junior water users. Are only getting fifty-four percent of their normal supply. So, um, we're seeing, already seeing some grapes being uh pushed up. And some other, uh, other crops that are, you know, marginal, that, that farmers are making some tough decisions around the kitchen table. And um, you know, so it's, it's gonna be a challenging year, I think, uh, once it starts to warm up, we'll have, I think. Uh, wildfire concerns and other issues of, things of that sorts, or uh, so I know that we're looking closely at that. We're also um, uh, engaged with some large agricultural interests in the Horse Heaven Hills. Looking at their water right portfolios, working with them to try to consolidate, and it's another way for us to protect. Um, uh, or, or provide them a mechanism for curtailment of their junior water rights. In other words, they typically have a portfolio of water rights that cover a variety of land. And we're going through and working with those large agricultural interests, consolidating those. And then providing, if there's an additional water that's made available through that consolidation, providing that as quote mitigation. For those permits that would be interrupted, so it's another way of trying to protect those folks. Plus, it provides us a more simple, more effective and more efficient way to understand water use and their water use. And, and it, in, in return, uh, the agricultural interests also have a more simpler process to follow with us. Instead of having to report twenty-three different water right requirements, we can consolidate that, that down to two or three in some cases. So, that's an extensive effort, we're kind of doing that on our own dime as well, but we see that as a real growth. And we know that, uh, there's some large agricultural farmers out in the Horse Heaven, in your county that we're working with.
Thank you very much, sir, for coming all the way down.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate it.
I'll just give you my card for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so for the, so we have that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant with the Department of Commerce to do the infrastructure engineering design work. Uh, our contract with the engineering folks must be executed before we sign that contract. We were not able to sign that contract or, or get that contract completed in time. And so that's something that's gonna be coming from Public Works, so that'll be coming down here in the next week or two. And from my understanding, despite the, the time delay, with that Department of Commerce grant. That's on a su- a super short time horizon, but even with the shortened time horizon with an execution date of June thirtieth of this year. Um, we're still looking at an eighty, ninety percent solution on that with the, with, with the engineering folks, so.
And then if there's two pieces to that that need signature, if you have time to separate those out, then we can be sure to sign them.
Yep, yep, I, yeah, so we're, just to be safe, we'll do the engineering one on one Tuesday. Following Tuesday, we'll do the Department of Commerce.
Okay, thank you, don't get me in trouble.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else you wanna move forward, or are we headed for lunch?
Do you want to do the, well, I put it under new business, so people will come back on.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna find that, yep.
We've got Jeff King, looks like he wants to.
Ah, I wasn't looking up, go ahead, Mr. King, yeah, good.
Uh, update some.
Thank you for being.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, um. With the public assistance for the winter storm event, I wanted to let you know that the President of the United States did sign that. Um, and he signed that on April twenty-eighth, so that is moving forward. We have uh cautious, optimistic hope that we will get a reimbursement. Like I've said before, uh, the county's cost for storm damage was in the neighborhood of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. PUD was around three hundred thousand. Um, the PUD is going directly through state emergency management, but the other county entities and cities. Have to go through emergency management locally, so we're working on that. Um, we might also be adding some uh fence repair damage to the Juniper Point site that I found a couple of weeks ago. In another uh, a visit up there for uh generator repair issues. Um, and then we've had an outdoor power unit fail just uh Monday morning at one thirty. Um, and by seven thirty or so last night, we figured out what that was. And it's taken down our uh primary microwave for the west end of the county, and we're running on the. Redundant loop, so our backup microwave for the west end county radio system uh at Stacker Butte. And um, yes, thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for clarifying the record that that is our responsibility to make those repairs. All of our equipment is our own responsibility at all sites, whether they're ours or we're subleased. Um.
And to clarify, though, the, the tower itself would be the tower owner's responsibility, the equipment is ours, right?
Yes and no, yes, at most sites that we sublease, however, at Stacker Butte specifically with the consortium. Um, when the county went in, clear back in twenty twelve, I believe, or twenty thirteen. Um, that was before my time as Director. Um, the arrangement with the consortium and the county to sublease there was to replace the wooden power poles that they had. For mounting antennas with commercial-grade steel structure. Um, and the county did that in, in lieu of um significant rent. Um, in the future, so that count, the tower at Stacker Butte specifically is owned by the county.
Oh.
And that is ours to manage and control. Um, the consortium is responsible under that agreement for the maintenance and operation of the facilities, building. The HVAC systems, the generator, the propane tanks, all of those things. All of our equipment is our responsibility as it is all subten- tenants. Um, but yeah, the main thing was that, that public assistance is going forward. And um, next Monday, the thirteenth, uh, State EMD is scheduled an applicant briefing. So that'll be our first look at um what the realities of what we may or may not be reversed, reimbursed for is. But again, I'm hopeful that that will all go through because they didn't balk at our first submission that went through the state to FEMA. Also, just to give you a heads up, the um, that burn ban uh for Zone One that you approved in your consent agenda today. We're also looking at um the potential for a June, June third, Zone Two, central part of the county. A burn ban, that's my discussion with the fire chief so far, um, and specifically Rule Seven. And that's the date they're looking at for their own burn ban, which is in our Zone Two. But we are watching that closely, right now, there's the predictions for fire season uh activity. Specifically, significant wildfire starts to occur is average through July. And um, but an average year is still uh leaves us with high fire danger in June, July through September. So just because it might turn out to be an average year, that does not mean we're gonna uh back off on our diligence. And I'm gonna be sending out information to the public about how to burn safely until the burn ban does go into effect. Um, right now, because a lot of people will be trying to get their things burnt before the burn ban goes. We want them to do that responsibly and safely, especially with the wind we've had. It's dried out all that rain we've just had, people need to know that that wind dries it out faster than the heat. But then later this week, we're gonna be in the high seventies and in the eighties over the weekend, so. Conditions on the ground will change quickly, please burn responsibly.
I know you're talking directly to me.
No. And anybody that is thinking about burning, that's right now.
I'm, I'm listening.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Any suggestions, Mr. Christopher, do you have any suggestions, or shall we take our lunch break?
I, yeah, I'm, seems early for lunch, but okay.
I have some things I can do.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
All right, uh, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to recess for lunch, uh, noting we'll be back at one o'clock.
Oh, second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I.
I, thank you, we'll see you after lunch.